Okay, it's two o'clock and we're going to call this session of our city council together. So if we could get a roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Moore. Mayor Proton McCary.
Here.
And Mayor Horn.
Here. Okay, so members of the public wishing to address the city council on items appearing on this agenda are advised to indicate their interest in doing so by submitting a speaker card to city staff for proceeding to the podium one by one at the time an item is considered. Members of the public wishing to address the city council on items not appearing on this agenda may do so during item five. Each speaker will have the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes, once per item, agenda item unless otherwise allowed by the city council. Speakers are requested but not required to identify themselves both on any applicable speaker cards and in comments or testimony. Speakers are advised that their names and any information submitted on speaker cards or otherwise provided in writing to the city may be disclosed or become a matter of public record. No speaker should expect privacy of such information. Okay, the pledge of allegiance. Pearl, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, free and fair, indivisible, with liberty and justice served.
Thank you. Okay, presentations and ceremonial matters. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, September 17th, 2025, Constitution Week, September 17th, the 23rd, 2025. Yoli, can you read the proclamation, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Laguna Woods, Constitution Day, Constitution Week, and Citizenship Day 2025. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America was signed in Philadelphia on September 17th, 1787, 238 years ago today. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America contains a preamble and seven articles that describe how government is structured and operates. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America has been amended 27 times with the first 10 of those amendments referred to as the Bill of Rights. And whereas since 1952, the federal government has annually observed September 17th as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day to commemorate the formation and signing of the Constitution of the United States of America and recognize all who have become citizens. And whereas since 1956, the federal government has annually observed September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim September 17th, 2025 as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, and September 17th through 23rd, 2025 as Constitution Week in the City of Laguna Woods and encourages its residents to consider the responsibilities and opportunities as part of this nation, dated the 17th day of September, 2025.
Thank you. Is anyone here to accept that proclamation? No. Okay, so would anyone from the public like to speak to that? Seeing none, okay, Pearl.
Well, I think I want to share my experience because I've been in this country for 60 years and I vividly remember the day I received the citizenship of the United States and that was a day of pride and honor and I felt relieved because I can call this great country home. And yet, I know many in our community live in fear and uncertainty because of their status in today's political climate. It is very important for us to honor the dignity of others so that we can feel secure and respected in this great community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem McCary would say? Would you like to say something? No? Okay, would you?
Yes, I would.
I, this is a remarkable document that the people who put it together were very well-educated people because you obviously wouldn't have illiterate people creating such a magnificent document. The people who, who did put it together were well-educated. They were people who, and that's so critical because they had to understand the history of other governments and understand what democracy was, looking at, looking over thousands of years how, how people had tried to rule themselves. This is the first experiment that the people would rule themselves. They wouldn't have a king or they wouldn't have an emperor or they wouldn't have a communist leader. Today, it's a different thing, but it's very similar, that's one person takes care of everything. And to have a document that holds up for 238 years, it has been amended, but the amendments were logical amendments and changes. It's, it's logical to me that you would make some adjustments, but to think that this document, these people put this together and thought of all the possibilities of, of how knowing the behavior of humans, that humans are, can be selfish. Humans can, can demand power. How do you, how do you account for that? How do you create something that allows everyone to have their right to speak? And we are seeing challenges that today, that if they don't like what you're saying, they, they want to kill you or they want to damage you. And I think it's a remarkable document and I am so proud to live in a country that we had people who created it. So I'm, I'm quite proud of this document.
Yes, the republic, if we can keep it. Unfortunately, some people are trying to interpret the amendments rather than just take them on the face value and I really worry about how we'll go forward. Would anyone like to move this? Okay, second. Okay, moved in second, it all in favor? Aye. We'll do, oh, we don't need a picture for this one. Okay, Hunger Action Month. Yoli, will you read this one, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Laguna Woods, Hunger Action Month, September 2025. Whereas food insecurity is a lack of access at times to enough food for an active, healthy life and limited or uncertain availability or nutritionally adequate foods. And whereas food insecurity may result in trade-offs between important basic needs such as housing or medical bills and purchasing nutritionally adequate foods. And whereas hunger, food, and nutritional insecurity and poverty are issues of vital concern in Orange County, where 359,910 people face food insecurity, according to Feeding America's Map, the Meal Gap Study for 2023. And whereas individuals throughout Orange County rely on food and meal services provided by organizations including Abound Food Care, Age Well Senior Services, the Community Action Partnership of Orange County's OC Food Bank, Second Harvest Food Bank, South County Outreach, and others. And whereas the City of Laguna Woods has an edible food recovery program that assists commercial food generators with recovering edible food that would otherwise be disposed. Now therefore, it be it resolved that Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in the City of Laguna Woods and encourages its residents to consider donating, volunteering, or otherwise supporting the efforts of food banks, food recovery organizations, and Meals on Wheels programs, dated the 17th day of September, 2025.
Thank you. And I know we have Ms. Linda Lewis to speak to this. Did I get that right? Yes. Please.
Very much. Yes, I'm Linda Lewis. I have been a volunteer at the Second Harvest Food Bank for over 25 years.
Will the mic down a little bit?
Is that better? Sorry, thank you. I would appreciate very much this opportunity to bring the, the problem of hunger and food insecurity in Orange County. I was shocked the day that I found that the number was over 359,000 people, includes over 86,000 children is the estimate. Our fiscal year 2025 Second Harvest Food Bank distributed over 42 million pounds of food throughout our network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, senior centers, schools, colleges, universities, and other community organizations throughout Orange County. I think we're in 23 different cities. When you go to the grocery store and you see all that fresh produce, you wonder if they can sell it before it goes bad? We have a food rescue program. We have trucks that will go pick up that food and take it directly out to these pantries and shelters so that that food is used and they have healthy food. We now have a farm, a 40-acre farm at the Great Park so that we're trying to grow as much fresh produce, that's again, healthy food to get out. And what, thank you very much that we're asking everyone to join the movement to help us end food insecurity. Your voice, action, and commitment will help every community has the food they need to thrive because when people are fed, futures are nourished. For ways to help us reduce hunger in Orange County this month, please visit our website at feedoc.org. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for coming. We'll do pictures right after, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
I, I was told as the need for food increases, supply shrink. Is that the reality of today's situation?
We're trying to, with the farm, grow as much food in the other programs. We have to rescue food so that we are meeting that need, but the need, of course, is growing. So we're trying to keep up with it.
Have you, have you seen the increase of people that, who comes for the, to get help in the food line?
My understanding is we're seeing that that need is growing above what it was during COVID.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annie, did you?
I just, just wanted to acknowledge our city for recognizing Food Insecurity Month and also acknowledge the residents of Laguna Woods Village. So many of the residents volunteer at food banks. So many of the residents collect food and deliver to the food banks. And so I just applaud our city and, and our community for doing our part to end food insecurity. And thank you for the work that you're doing in your organization as well.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I, on two counts, I really support and I appreciate everything you're doing. I, I do deliver Meals on Wheels and I did volunteer at your farm. We collect, we were picking zucchini and I have to tell you, it was really tiring. My legs were so tired because it was pulling and I didn't really, it wasn't the bending over, it was the pulling back of the zucchini and carrying the, the pails. And they have another one this Saturday. I'm not sure if I'll be able to make it. I'm going to try. But at any rate, I, the farm is fantastic because it's the free, it's the labor that drives up the cost of food. So every time we mechanize, we save, it's, and that's why carrots are so cheap because they are mechanized. But anyway, that farm is fantastic and there are tremendous number of, I see families when, the day that I was talking about the, the zucchini, it was young families bringing their children. What a great way for children to grow up, understanding that our job in life is to help other people and to pitch in. So I, I think you guys do a fantastic job and thank you.
Yes. I'm the only one that wore orange today, as you asked for, but it was in respect for you and what you do and so many of our neighbors, as Annie said, do volunteer every time for food drives and collect a lot of food for South County. So thank you for what you do and we will, do we want to move this?
I move this proclamation.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so we're going to take a five, recess for two minutes and take a picture, okay? Okay, back in session. Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments on non-agenda items. This is the time and the place for the members of the public to address the city council on items not appearing on this agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council is unable to take action on such items but may ask clarifying questions of the speaker, engage in brief discussion, refer items to city staff, and/or schedule items for consideration at future meetings. So public comment is open. Catherine, do you have anything? No, public comment is now closed. Okay, City Treasurers Report.
Good afternoon. I will, I will be reporting the City Treasurers Report as of August 31st, 2025. Total cash and investments as of August 31st totaled $14,352,111. Of this, the general fund operating cash and investments ended at $6,822,202,000. And the general fund reserves increased to $4,651,600. This increased from $3,753,700, which was consistent with the city council approval. Special revenue funds ended at $2.8 million. Cash and investments was broken down to cash and cash equivalents with an ending balance of $943,573. The life had an ending balance of $6.3 million, which had a, ending the, the month with a yield rate of 4.251%. And camp had an ending balance of $1,4,590 with the yield rate at 4.4%. Investments in certificates of deposits had an ending balance of $6,75,808. And the average yield rate for that was 4.35% because this equals a $14.3 million. During the month of August, there were three CDs that matured, each at $245,000 principal amount, and there were no purchases of CDs during the month of August. The city's trust funds with the other post-employment benefits had an ending balance of approximately $155,000 and had a net gain of $3,073. And the pension liability trust account had an ending balance of $305,000 with a net gain of $6,640. At this time, we will take any public comments.
Questions by the council? Questions, the public? Seeing none, thank you very much for an excellent job as always.
And we'll just take a motion to receive and file.
Oh, motion to receive and file.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. It moves. Consent calendar.
Actually, item 62, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Annual.
We have a second item under the City Treasurers Report today. I wanted to take a moment to talk with you about our annual pension plans valuation report. This is item 62 on the agenda. At a really high level, the city maintains two different pension plans within the CalPERS program. We refer to one as the classic plan and then one as the Peppera Plan. You can think of this as pre and post 2013 statewide pension reform. The classic plan is generally speaking for employees who have been enrolled in CalPERS for longer and were enrolled in CalPERS prior to January 1st of 2013. And then Peppera would be for employees after that 2013 cutoff. Since May of 2017, the city council has taken pretty aggressive action to manage its pension liabilities. You have approved lump sum payments in most years. Some years you weren't required to, but you've generally speaking approved pretty regular lump sum payments to reduce the unfunded accrued liability of your pension plans. Those lump sum payments do two things. One, they reduce the amounts of money that the city has to pay in the future because you're paying early. And then it also helps to mitigate the potential future impacts of reductions in or variances from CalPERS discount rate. That is the rate that CalPERS establishes annually for its expected rate of return on its investments. So in other words, lump sum payments help to provide some smoothing for years where CalPERS might have expected to receive one amount but actually earned a lesser amount. We had our consulting actuary estimate the savings from May 2017 to current as a result of those lump sum payments. I like that in the screen in front of us, it is conveniently cutting off the dollar value. But I will share that it is, so since May of 2017.
Can't move that?
I can't move it, no.
What if you drag that corner down?
It's not on my computer, it's on theirs. The, since May of 2017, the council's approved just under 1.2 million in lump payments. That's across the classic and Peppera plans. For that period of time, our actuary has estimated that that has saved us $1,303,000. So it's, I, I've used the analogy in the last couple of days as it's kind of like paying your credit card, right? The cheapest point to pay your credit card is when the first bill arrives for you. If you wait longer, that interest compounds and it gets more expensive. And in this case, it's made even more complicated because your interest rate isn't fixed, right? If CalPERS earnings versus discount rate fluctuate over time, it's effectively like not paying off a credit card that has a variable interest rate. So anyway, the, the investments that we've made have saved a considerable amount of money for the city. Every year, CalPERS issues a, an actuarial report for each city's pension plans, the most recent of which is as of June 30th, 2024. So these lag one year behind. In the current report, as of the end of fiscal year 2324, there are really two key takeaways I wanted to share with you. The first is that our pension plans are super funded. This has been the case a couple of times in the past where the value of the plan assets in the pension plans exceeds the liabilities. So in other words, you have no unfunded accrued liabilities for your pension plans. You actually have a slight cushion of assets over liabilities that will provide some offset for as, you know, CalPERS rates change in the future. So once again, you have no unfunded accrued pension liabilities. And then when we look at this current fiscal year's costs versus next fiscal year's costs, the cost that the city pays will actually decrease very slightly, but you'll decrease nonetheless. For the classic plan, instead of paying 13.08% of each eligible employee's annual covered payroll, the city will be paying 13.06%. And on the Peppera side, that'll decrease from 8.24% to 8.21%. I would note that these are the employee side, or employer side contributions. Employees also pay towards their pension plans. For the classic plan, even though it's not required by state law, all classic employees pay 7% of their annual covered salary. And for the Peppera Plan, employees pay a rate that is set by state law. It's currently 8%, but it's subject to change annually. Right now, most of our employees are Peppera employees. That, you know, was the intent of pension reform, right? Is that through attrition and people aging out of the system, eventually all employees will be on the Peppera Plan, which is generally speaking, less expensive for employers than the classic plan was. So the even better news is that we're super funded this current year and based on how CalPERS has performed in the 2024, 25 fiscal year, we expect that we will likely be super funded next year as well. That's because CalPERS for last fiscal year had a discount rate of 6.8%. So it said, we're expecting to earn 6.8% on our pooled investments. Their preliminary net investment return for the year was 11.6%. So they were 4.8% higher than their discount rate. That will net positive for us, particularly because we have assets over liabilities right now. So we don't know for sure. Demographics do factor into this as well and we have added several new employees in the last couple of months, as you're aware. But right now, we anticipate that we'll be super funded for next year as well. And then further good news, this December, once your annual audit is complete, we expect that the city will be able to reach its initial pension pre-funding trust fund funding goal. In January, you established a goal of $670,000 for an initial funding level for that irrevocable pension pre-funding trust fund. We have some policies in place that take a percentage of year-end revenue over expenditures to hit that target. We believe that based on how revenue performed last year, we'll be able to fully fund the $670,000 in December. And then consistent with the policy, we would recommend a new funding goal thereafter. That initial funding goal was based on a five-year, five fiscal year retrospective of lump sum payments made towards the CalPERS pension plans. So all of this is good news. We wanted to share that with you. Our valuation reports are available on the city's website as well as historical information on payments made. But there's an opportunity for public comments today and then a request for the city council to receive and file this report. I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. Public comments is open. Catherine, do you have anything to say? Okay, public comments is closed, council?
I have a question. So Chris, it was stated that 2017, you passed the, to make a lump sum payment periodically, right?
Yeah, in May of 2017, that was the first grouping of lump sum payments that the council made. And then generally speaking, what happened is after each actuarial evaluation report was issued by CalPERS, if there was unfunded accrued liability calculated, then the city council made lump sum payments at those times as well. So for the years that we were super funded, like we are right now, contributions were not made. But for every year where there was some amount of unfunded accrued liability, the council was diligent about making those lump sum payments.
Okay, so periodic means once a year? Is that what it is?
Uh, yeah, once, once a year. It wasn't every year though, again, because some years we were super funded, so it was no more than once a year and it was for most of the years between 2017 and now.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I, I was sitting here thinking about it because I was, early this morning, I had an 8:15 meeting in Santa Ana, it was the LAFCO meeting, and we were reviewing the MSR for the. It was a LAFCO meeting, and we were reviewing the MSR for the central, those are the central cities and, and the independent districts. Oh, independent districts located within that area. And there were several cities that are, that have financial challenges. I mean, real financial challenges. And I was just sitting here thinking about it because I don't think that was even brought up. What they looked at, well, no, they didn't. We looked at the, the MSRs generally look at your income and your, you know, your expenses and your, if you have reserves, and some cities don't, by the way, or have, you know, not, not enough perhaps. Anyway, as I was sitting here thinking about, I thought, my gosh, just think how that could affect them too. Because I don't think that's entered into it. And I thought, wow, just think about some of these cities that are so challenged. I think recently, didn't we hear that Santa Monica is having a real serious problem? We know that, that the ones today that I, that we saw were, are orange. And I'm trying to think of the other cities, perhaps Anaheim, I think, yeah, comes to mind. At any rate, when, once you fall behind in these things, it's kind of, you're right. That was a very good analogy about not paying your credit card bill. You don't pay it, the next month you have, and it's going to be compounded. And it's just growing at such a rate that you just keep falling further and further behind. And so this points out, thank you so much for staying on top of this because we didn't, we hadn't made those payments until 2017, wasn't it? Okay, I think it's critical to, to keep your, your expenses paid and stay on top of things. Thank you.
I have one more question. Since 2017, have we been making the payments every year, pretty much? Or we?
Only in the years where there was an unfunded accrued liability calculated. So we have not sought to be super funded. We've ended up super funded in some years because CalPERS has outperformed its discount rate. And so all boats rise as a result of it. But we've never, we've never made lump sum payments if there wasn't an unfunded pension liability that existed at the time. So, so yeah, so if this holds, then we won't have an unfunded accrued liability payment this year or next year, hopefully. And yeah, in some years, we made current year payments because there is a current year unfunded accrued liability payment. But yeah, we, we've stayed on top of it and generally paid down to zero.
Can I get a motion to receive and file?
Move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we come to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or city staff requests that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and consideration of action. Members of the public may address the city council on items appearing on the consent calendar, regardless of whether an item is removed for separate discussion and consideration of action. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent calendar? Can I get a motion?
I move the consent calendar.
I second.
Thank you, moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye, okay. And we have no public hearings, so we come to city council business. Pedestrian, bicycle and skateboard regu- regulations. I'll turn this over to our city manager.
This is the second time this item's before you. At your meeting last month on August 20th, you conducted a public hearing and approved the introduction and first reading of this ordinance. We also had a more robust staff report at that time. As a reminder, the proposed ordinance does really three key things. It aligns the city's regulations for bicycles with e-bicycles. It prohibits the unsafe use of electronic or electric bicycles and also provides examples of what may constitute unsafe use. And then finally, it deletes language that allows the city manager to unilaterally prohibit bicycle use on certain portions of the sidewalk. The agenda packet includes the proposed ordinance and the agenda report with additional information. As a reminder, this ordinance does not apply to private property, so it would not apply inside Laguna Woods Village. This ordinance applies on public streets and sidewalks, public right-of-way. Our recommendation today is that after receiving public comment, the city council approves second reading and adopt an ordinance read by title with further reading waived, titled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, amending chapter 8.12 of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code pertaining to pedestrian, bicycle and skateboard regulations, including but not limited to regulations pertaining to pedestrian movements and bicycles and other conveyances propelled by human powers such as skateboards and roller skates, as well as electric bicycles, and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. If the ordinance before you is, if the recommendation is taken today, the ordinance would be effective in 30 days' time. With that, I would suggest taking public comments, and then I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, public comments are open, Catherine.
I don't disagree with it. My question is, when you have an ordinance of this nature, how do you enforce it? Because it seems to me when you're having laws on the books, you gotta be able to enforce it, and I don't know how you do that. Because you can't have police just sitting around waiting for somebody to do it. Just a question of how do we really run our government when we have this kind of legislation? This is broad. People shouldn't be doing it. But if you can't enforce things, why do we even have it?
May I respond?
I'm just asking the question.
Well, why would we even have a speed limit? I mean, there are people, the sheriff will respond.
I didn't hear you.
The sheriff will respond. We have speed limits, and you could say, make the same argument, why should you have a speed limit?
I know. And I guess that's the frustration I have because we see people speeding and things like this, and nothing ever happens, you know?
See, we have a frustration.
Hopefully, then we educate people and the electric bike people that, hey, those are the rules that we operate within the city, and then maybe they'll comply. I don't know, just a question.
I, I have to comment because I have to agree. We have rules and laws that you're supposed to stop at a stop sign, and I would say 2% do it. I, I can't believe how many people don't stop at a stop sign. That doesn't mean we don't have the rule. We have to have the rule. The difficulty is always enforcing anything, and we have to rely on people, hopefully, educating them and getting them to understand why it's important to follow it. But you can't not have a rule because you say it would be difficult to enforce. Everything's difficult to enforce because we, all the rules are promulgated on the belief that we are going to be honest and do the right thing. And in general, probably 98% of the time we do, but there are, that's a difficulty.
And I'll just note too, that the sheriff's department will enforce the ordinance. This, versions of this ordinance exist in cities around here. This was based in part on Laguna Nigella's ordinance and the county's ordinance for the unincorporated areas. And the sheriff's department is actively enforcing in both of those jurisdictions. They write citations, they pull people over. So I realize there's a question about the availability of law enforcement resources, but it is a tool that they will have, either if they observe something or if they receive a call to respond to something.
Or if a person causes damage or an accident, at least they can also get a ticket for something because you shouldn't have been doing it in the first place. So, yeah, it's like your seatbelt law.
Right.
You know?
Without the law, you, you're right, you couldn't enforce the insurance on it. If you had litigation, you had no law in place. So the laws is critical. But there is education involved here, and I think it has to do also, I thought that in some instances, they can make these bikes go faster than the speed that they were manufactured for. So you have to be able to, you have to be able to enforce something and have the law in place. That would be a dereliction on our part, I would think, to not have addressed when we saw a problem. So we almost have to have it.
I, I did have a question. Since this was posted on the website as part of the agenda, did we get any, any public comments, any emails or?
No, at your previous meeting, we entered into the record a letter from, I'm blanking on the name right now, but there was an advocacy group that submitted public comments prior to the first meeting. But we've had no additional public comments since that time.
Thank you.
Pearl, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Okay, so can I get a motion?
Okay, so I, I moved the, I recommend that we approve the second reading and adoption of this.
Second, okay, moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Carol, did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, employee positions, compensation and benefits.
All right. There are really two parts to what we're recommending here today. As you're aware, the current fiscal year 2025, 27 budget and work plan includes funding for a number of new positions, namely the building positions that were moved in-house and then a full-time code enforcement officer position. We have successfully filled all of the building positions. We have also filled the new director position, and we have an individual starting on Monday for the senior management analyst position. That leaves us with just a single vacancy at this point. That's the code enforcement officer position. We're using contract code enforcement staff right now. We have a contract through December for that. But today, we're asking for the city council to approve a job classification for the code enforcement officer position that will allow us to begin recruitment and then also to establish a compensation range for that position. If all goes according to plan, I am hopeful that we will have the new code enforcement officer starting in November or thereabouts, providing a little bit of overlap with the contract firm to transition the current caseload. And then come January 1st or potentially sometime in December, that person would be, you know, fully situated and be responsible for that work independent of the contract firm. The second part of this recommendation, there is an inadvertent error we're looking to correct. When we have discussed the educational assistance program for employees, we have discussed it in terms of being available to employees after six months of employment. The resolution that was adopted by the city council last month identifies it as being available after a full year of employment. So we're just looking to correct those references to instead clarify that the educational assistance program becomes available to eligible employees as of the 183rd calendar day of employment.
That work? The, the educational assistance?
The educational assistance program, it is an amount of money based on the time that the employee has worked for the city. So there's three different levels of how much funding is available. They have to obtain approval from their supervisor and from myself, demonstrating that the course that they're looking to take is job-related. They receive reimbursement for the course after they receive either a C or better or a pass if it's graded on a pass/fail basis. Under federal law, there's only certain types of educational expenses that we can provide reimbursement for. So it's generally limited to tuition and books and kind of mandatory registration fees. It doesn't include a whole lot else other than that. And again, the longer you're with the city, the more you can theoretically receive in educational assistance. This program is for, in large part, for building inspectors and building staff. It's intended to provide a way for them to receive financial assistance to keep current on the certifications that they're required to have. But it is available to all full-time employees as well.
You mean all other, okay. So the reason I'm asking, it's not only, there, sometimes there's a difficulty. It has to be from a certified source, but can you take them from, like our JPIA? Are those equal or you?
No, so.
Versus UCI? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so the city will still pay for certain types of training. For instance, JPIA training doesn't directly cost the city anything because it's paid for through the premiums for the program.
They always cover it.
Yeah, the, but this is primarily for classes taken through colleges or professional trade associations. For building inspectors, it'll be a lot of courses through the International Code Council, which is the certifying agency. To date, we've also, or we've approved education assistance for employees looking to take courses to enhance their computer skills and also from an employee looking to, to further develop construction management skills. So directly job-related functions. But it doesn't mean that the city won't still be providing some training of its own. For instance, last week, we provided employees with an opportunity to receive first aid and CPR training. We did that at the city's cost, not requiring people to go through the educational assistance program.
But do they have to be, like, I guess, do they have to, are they have to be certified to, that, that you actually get credits? Or can they be professional training too, it sounds like?
They can be professional training as long as, if it's not a graded course, they just have to pass the course. So usually, it's a pass/fail or something equivalent to that. So yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be like a traditional college class.
I think this is a wonderful opportunity that we give to our employees. Have many taken advantage of it over the years?
So we, this program actually only came online in July. We've had two employees participate in it so far. But again, pretty much everyone on the building side will participate in it in some point. But I would expect that as people become more familiar with the program, we'll have more participation in it. But right out of the gate, we had two ready to go, so that's a good thing.
It is wonderful. Did you have more to say on that?
So I'll just say there's an opportunity for public comments, and then our recommendation is in two parts, but you're welcome to take them together if you'd like. First part is to approve a job classification for the following city employee position, code enforcement officer. And then number two, adopt a resolution titled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, repealing resolution number 25-27 and establishing a compensation schedule and benefits for city employees, including the city manager and other local agency executives as defined in California Government Code, section 3511.1.
Okay, we'll take them together, public comment. Catherine, do you have anything?
I have a question for Chris.
Okay. Closed. Pearl.
My question too, Chris. What does, what is a code enforcement officer do? What, what is, apparently, it's a position we didn't have, we're creating it or?
We, right now, we, so we've had, over the years, we've either had in-house code enforcement officers or we've contracted for them. Right now, we're contracting for code enforcement services. We've done that for a number of years. So we've always had code enforcement, it just kind of has taken a different form. Code enforcement officers, the primary responsibility is enforcing the Laguna Woods Municipal Code. So any of the ordinances the city council adopts, the code enforcement officer is empowered to enforce. In addition to that, they provide some assistance with proactive inspections of public property. So for instance, code enforcement does, every month, they do an evening lighting inspection to make sure that our safety lights, traffic signal lights, residential street lights are illuminated. They'll do other inspections along those, those lines. They also assist with the business registration program, so they do a lot of the outreach to businesses on that. But they, you know, predominantly, they enforce what I would term like quality of life violations of the municipal code. So they do a lot of smoking enforcement, unpermitted temporary signs, property maintenance, those sorts of violations. And then they also assist the building staff with enforcing the building code violations and following up on that as well.
Okay. Okay, so I think we'll take them together and I'll take a motion. Move this. Anyone?
I will. I, what am I, okay. I, I make a motion that we adopt both the resolutions as stated by the city manager.
Second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so city council meeting schedule?
Thank you. So I would like to ask that the city council schedule an additional meeting for this month. We have a time-sensitive construction project that we're looking to award a contract for. We have, we received bids last Friday. Our intent was to include that on this agenda. However, we need to temporary construction. However, we need two temporary construction easements from private property owners to complete the work. We did not have those in place in time for this agenda, so we're looking to schedule a meeting for next week to consider that item, as well as, we have at least one other proclamation on that agenda so far, but I would expect it would be a very short meeting. We are recommending scheduling an adjourned regular meeting of the city council to be held on Thursday, September 25th at 3:00 p.m. here at City Hall, 24264 El Toro Road, Laguna Woods, California, 92637. I have checked with council member Connors, who isn't here today. That date also works for her if it is agreeable with the rest of you. And again, probably only one or two agenda items, really just a timing issue of stuff we couldn't get on this agenda. So there's an opportunity for any public comments, and then if you would entertain a motion, our recommendation would be that September 25th, that 3:00 p.m. date.
Everyone okay with that date?
Three.
Yeah, 3:00, 3:00 p.m.
And we'll take a motion?
I move that we have this special council meeting on September.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. They can't hear your head shake. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, city council reports and comments. This is the time and place for members of the city council to provide reports on meetings attended, including but not limited to meetings of regional boards and entities to which they've been appointed to represent the city, and meetings attended at the expense of the city pursuant to California Government Code Section 53232.3. Members of the city council may also make other comments and announcements. Coastal Green Belt, Mayor Protem McCary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Coastal Green Belt Authority did meet last week, September 10th. There were, was not a lot of reports given, but there were two items that, that were of interest. And the first one was a, there was a discussion regarding the city of Laguna Beach considering opening a pump, I have to say it right, pump bike trail. It's a trail where bikers are allowed to come and ride around, and families come together. And so the city is considering it. The problem is that it's, it's in open space. So the authority has brought this up for discussion, and we haven't made a recommendation yet, but there was some discussion about the fact that this might be setting a precedent by giving away open space and encouraging the city to look at other areas in which to consider a trail so that it doesn't interfere with the open space. So no decision was made about it, but there was much discussion from people that were supporting it, and also some people that were against it and not wanting to set precedent. So the council, the authority members decided that we would table this for the next meeting to allow the authority members to get more information and more details before they actually make a recommendation from the Green Belt Authority to the city of Laguna Beach. So there would be more discussion on that. The other announcement that was made is that the Laguna College of Art and Design is finally having their groundbreaking, groundbreaking ceremony, because they're building a new college in Laguna Beach, and so they're having the groundbreaking ceremony. Apparently, the project is 22,000 square foot, and it's, it's gonna have open housing, and the purpose, one of the purposes is to attract more, more students from outside of the city to come into the city to attend the college and maybe set up residence or contribute to the city. So the groundbreaking ceremony is gonna be Sunday, September 21st, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and anyone is invited to attend. And our next meeting for the Green Belt Authority is in November.
Thank you. Orange County Fire Authority, we only met this month in closed session, so I have no report. Orange County Library.
The library continues to be quite busy, and I think I've mentioned this before, because I can mention it every single month, they have, have the authors coming now, and on the 25th, at 6:30, they're going to be at Laguna Hills Community Center. And Alka Joshi, who is Ramish's daughter, also happens to be one of the authors who's featured on that day.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, Councilmember Lee. Vector control.
Want to show that?
What is it?
Oh.
We have some slides. Oh, you, oh, I see.
Yes.
Give me just one moment. Maybe if we take the watershed report, and I'll pull up the vector control slides.
We did not have a meeting, we'll have a meeting next month.
Okay, so, AIDS-borne disease update and invasive AIDS reports. Now, this is the, one of the busiest month for the mosquito activity, and there are three different kinds of invasive AIDS mosquitoes, yellow fever mosquitoes, Asian tiger mosquitoes, Australian backyard mosquitoes. The next? The disease, the, is it a dengue? The AIDS disease is primarily spread through the bite of an infected AIDS mosquitoes. And the risk in California, dengue, risk in California, if you see from 2000, where's it, 2015 through 2025, last 10 years, we had a high reported incidence from 2022, 2023, 2024. But 2025, we have a relatively very low count of reports, only 55 cases that were reported. The next one? And it, dengue risk in California in a map, we, where we are, we are in a, either extremely low, no risk, low risk, and a very low-risk area. Okay, the next one? The AIDS-borne disease, the total travel required AIDS-borne disease cases has been eight for 2025, and there are breakdowns from where these reports are coming from. There's one case in Elizobiejo, Dana Point, Fullerton, there's none from Laguna Woods. The next one? And once we have the, we get the report, people notify the city, we come up with the treatment and notify the residents and all the neighbors by putting a door hangers or the flyers and media and websites, and we follow up with the city and the residents and address any residents' complaints or concerns. We try to control the spread of the disease after it's been reported, try to keep in a restricted area, and also follow up with the treatment. That's how they try to minimize the spread of the disease. And this AIDS disease, although most of the cases, the reported symptoms are not serious, but it can get very, very serious and get very sick. So everybody watch out for mosquitoes and stay safe. Thank you.
Pearl, can I ask you a question about fleas? How was the typhus this year? And have they found any of the plague fleas that were in Tahoe? Have they found any? Did it spread?
Pardon me?
Did the flea-borne typhus?
Yes.
And I know they were carrying plague in Tahoe, and I was wondering if it spread from Tahoe and how much the typhus is here this season?
The, this season has not been as active, you know, compared to previous years. The reported cases were, 2024, there were like 700 cases reported. This year's only 65. And I think for Laguna Woods, probably, if, if, very little, if, if not none, reported.
I really meant for the county, not just Laguna Woods.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. San Joaquin Hills, Cynthia's not here. In the watershed, you said there was nothing. I was unable to attend the program last night at Community Bridge Builders. I know that they will be tomorrow, there's Peace Day, and the African-American Heritage Club and Community Bridge Builders will be with concerned citizens to have a program celebrating peace. Are there any other comments and reports?
I've attended the town hall on Monday, United and Third Mutual, combined town hall meetings.
Mike?
Mike, oh, okay, can you hear me? Yeah. No, there was a town hall, United and the Third Mutual. This is the first time that I've been to that they have both mutuals. There are a few directors who were present, had a question-and answering sessions, and then the, probably the crowd was half the size of, of the Coyotes Town Hall meeting. But there were very active conversation going on, and the residents that were present, they were concerned about the HOA fees going up in 2026, and, you know, they were, because they're on the fixed income, they wanted to know ahead of time, they wanted to know what is causing this, they wanted to know what we're doing about it, that kind of conversation. But most of the, one thing that I really noticed was that the conversations were just, it's not really a conversation. Everything they said, the director said, "Come to the board meeting." That was a standard answer, which really aggravated the, the residents that came. So I think maybe they wanted the communication that are more solution-oriented than just being, having a one-line answers, and that really, didn't really help. But I was glad, I think one of the purpose of having that meeting is to encourage people to run for the director's position, and, and, and encourage them to get more involved, and voice their opinions by coming to the committee meetings and to the board meetings. So it was a good effort, I feel, that it was made by, I don't know whether it was held by GRF or United, all combined, I think.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything they want to say?
I was just gonna ask, Councilmember Lee, you also attended the TCA meeting, right? Did you attend the Toll Road meeting?
What meeting?
Oh, yeah, as, as an alternate?
Yes.
Yes, I, I went to the.
San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corps, our agency.
As an alternate for Cynthia.
Do you have anything to say?
I, no, I find that committee very, very interesting. They were talking about the future application of AIs and pros and cons, and how they can monitor and keep the privacy, and I really enjoyed the section, and there were a lot of things that were brought up. Was very interesting, yes, thank you.
Okay, well, seeing nothing else, we have no closed session, so we're going to adjourn this meeting till Wednesday, Thursday, the 25th, at 3:00.
Thank you, everyone.
Meeting adjourned.